Everybody thinks drainage. When they were putting them in in the eighteen hundreds, one of the biggest reasons was malaria. They were worried about malaria. They wanted less water. That was the thinking at the time.
Okay, it's four thirty and we'll we'll get started. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Joint Airport Zoning Board. It's four thirty P M. Wednesday, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes from the March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. You receive copies of that in your agenda packet. Are there any corrections or adjustments? If not, a motion would be in order to approve the minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cosed, motion carries. Next item of business is a zoning update presentation. This is going to be conducted by Brian Page from Mead and Hunt. I would note that Mead and Hunt is a consulting firm that provides services to the city of New Ulm. Mr. Page?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Brian Page. We are a consultant for the airport assisting the city with the update in its zoning going forward and kind of the purpose of tonight's meeting. So hopefully everybody can hear me okay. If you can't, certainly stop me and ask me to kind of run through it again if you need be. If there's anything that you may miss. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Talk a little bit about what we're going to be talking about tonight. We have an agenda as you see on the board. As mentioned, I'm Brian Page with Mead and Hunt and we also have the Joint Airport Zoning Board and also the city engineer here tonight. Kind of walk through things. Tonight's specific goal that the purpose of this meeting is really to kind of get the information out there to you about what the city is in up to as far as what the zoning is going to look like going forward. And again, this is really centered around zoning matters with the city and zoning around the airport. So just kind of keep that in mind, I guess, for the purpose of tonight's meeting. The zoning is a requirement in order for the the city to actually have a public service airport. So this isn't anything new to any community. This is something that all communities in the entire state of Minnesota are required to do in order to be able to have a public license to operate. As I mentioned, there is existing zoning that's already in place. This isn't something new for the first time. There's already zoning out there. So what's being done is basically an update to the existing zoning. And what the driver is behind that is there's been some recent regulatory changes that need to be updated to be able to bring everything to current standards. So with that, I kind of dive into a couple of things. Talk a little bit about the Joint Airport Zoning Board, which is the JASB. You may hear a few acronyms being used tonight or kind of flying around. So if you're not sure what that means, certainly let me know and we can kind of step back and figure out what those are. But that's what the JASB stands for rather than writing out Joint Airport Zoning Board. We just figured we kind of shortened that up a little bit. But the role and responsibility of the JASB is really kind of threefold. The first thing is they need to convene. They need to establish that JASB first. Once the JASB is established, then they'll be responsible for basically the implementation and the development of the new airport zoning going forward. And then once they get to that point, the final duties of that JASB are going to be able to appoint the people that are going to carry forward that program for the implementation of it and actually the enforcement of it. And that's going to be through the Board of Adjustment and also a zoning administrator. So that's kind of the the process, if you would, and the role and responsibility of the JASB. We also have MINDOT, the Minnesota Department of Transportation, which they are also part of this behind the scenes. They are reviewing everything that is being done by this body to make sure it's consistent with what the the state's requirements are. And again, this is a statutory requirement that the city go through this process. The Secretary of Transportation does need to review this in the end and has to sign off and approve each one of these various different zoning updates that all various different airports do throughout the state of Minnesota. So MINDOT is very much engaged in this entire process. Again, I'm with Mead and Hunt and our role and responsibility is we have experience doing this with a lot of communities throughout the state. And we've been asked to assist the city of New Ulm with this zoning update. So. With that, just to kind of talk a little bit, a little bit of background, I guess, of the zoning requirements. It can be found in the Minnesota statutes, chapter three sixty, if anybody wants to look it up. You can certainly go through and follow through what all the requirements are. There's a certain subsection of that that basically spins off into what is known as the Minnesota Administrative Rules and that is the eighty-eight hundred chapter. And the zoning in particular is eighty-eight hundred dot two four. So if anybody wants to look that up and kind of follow through what the state's standards are, you're certainly more than welcome to do that. The purpose of going through and updating the zoning, as I mentioned, is part of the requirements that it's a statutory requirement for all public service airports in the state of Minnesota. And it's contingent on the airport receiving any sort of state or federal funding. In order to be able to actually receive that funding, the city has to make sure that it keeps its zoning updated. MINDOT is actually being supported. The Minnesota Department of Transportation also has a branch subdivision which is known as the Office of Aeronautics, which actually leads these efforts as they pertain to aviation in the state of Minnesota. I'll talk a little bit about the existing zoning. Not sure if anybody is familiar or has seen the existing zoning that's already in place, but that was adopted by the city in nineteen eighty-four. That is the version that is currently in place for the city. So some people might be saying, well, that's a long time ago. It is. And and there's a lot of changes that occur over time. Some of those changes are part of the reason why we're going through this exercise now is to make some of those updates. And in some senses, it's actually going to make it a little bit better on some runway approaches. And we'll get into that and talk to that about that here in a little bit. This reason being is the standards that were in nineteen eighty-four were a little bit different than what was just enacted in two thousand and nineteen. So with that, as far as the JASB is concerned, as we talked about, the board, as you see here tonight, that board is actually in the city charter as to how that board is assembled. It's actually in the city code, section three point one nine, if anybody would like to take a look at that. I believe, Dave, that's right on the website, the city website, if anybody would like to take a look.
Yes, it is.
One of the things of note, I guess, from the nineteen eighty-four zoning is it was actually providing zoning for the primary runway being fifty-five hundred feet long at the time, back in nineteen eighty-four. Runway's not that long, will never be that long. So that's where I mentioned before that when we zone, we're going to zone for what's out there today. The longest runway, the primary runway, is only fifty-four hundred feet. So that's going to be a little bit of a change that's going to be coming about. One of the nuances from the previous zoning exercise, there's currently two runways at the New Ulm Municipal Airport, the primary runway, and there's also a what we call a crosswind runway. Primary runway is the paved runway, if you've ever been out there and taken a look. Crosswind runway is the turf runway. The turf runway currently does not have zoning and was not zoned as part of the nineteen eighty-four effort. It should have been, it wasn't. And that's part of what's going to be done going forward. In addition to, there's a proposal for a new runway there at the airport. And the zoning has to be in place for the new runway. So there'll be three runways zoned as part of this effort. This talks a little bit about the various different zoning requirements. It's kind of the excerpts that is actually from the zoning ordinance, the draft ordinance that's out there. Talks a little bit about and gives some definitions of what's allowed or what isn't allowed in the various different zones. You basically have three zones from a land use compatibility standpoint or a land use safety standpoint. And those three zones are going to either be Zone A, Zone B, or Zone C. C is probably the least restrictive. B is somewhat restrictive, but A is closest to the end of the runway and that's going to be the most restrictive. They don't want to see anything in that Zone A for safety reasons. And part of the whole purpose of going through this exercise, again, is for safety reasons. Kind of view it as Highway fourteen, for instance. Highway fourteen has a right-of-way next to it. Kind of, you almost kind of have to picture these zones as being right-of-way. Kind of the same purpose as for the purpose of the safety of the people that are traveling on Highway fourteen and the people around that live around Highway fourteen. They have a certain distance in case there's any sort of a digression from the pavement or whatever the case may be. So that's kind of the purpose of going through this exercise. Now, each one of these has various different requirements that come along with it. And we're going to talk a little bit about this graphically and show you what the impacts of each one of these zones looks like. But just kind of wanted to make mention, I guess, of what each one of these are. We'll we'll get into them a little bit more in depth as we move forward. Again, this is the existing zoning. I kind of feared this probably wasn't going to work out real well trying to see this. But you can kind of see the two highlighted sections here that I've got the cursor on that are kind of red and typed. And this is describing the zones A and Zone B. But the the reason I wanted to indicate both of those, again, this is the existing zoning tied to a runway that was theoretical back in nineteen eighty-four and never came to fruition. And it was a longer runway than what they needed at that time. So what's in place today, which is this document, actually is for a longer runway that doesn't exist. So in a sense, we're bringing things into a distance that makes a lot more sense for what's actually out. Again, as I mentioned, the state legislature passed some regulatory changes to section three sixty in two thousand and nineteen. This is that excerpt from that that really talks about what it is that we're doing here with New Ulm, which we are using what is commonly referred to as the standard approach to the zoning here. And what that means is there isn't anything odd happening here that needs to be taken into consideration. There is a second path that can be followed that is a custom approach, is what it is commonly referred to as. But that requires some pretty extraordinary circumstances for you to follow that. Plus, it also takes the commissioner's prior approval for any community to start that process. The default is going to use the commissioner's standards is what's basically excerpted here from the section sixty. Now, the way you're going to have to look at zoning is in two two different ways. Being that you're talking about aircraft that get airborne, you have an airspace basically around an airport that you have to consider. And the airspace around it basically is going to go vertical and and if you want it a conical shape out from the runway itself, the runway environment. And that's for the protection. It starts at certain elevations and it climbs up at a certain elevation to get to the point that it's really not going to be an issue anymore because you're so high above the the ground that nothing, you know, could really even penetrate or be an issue. That's what this drawing is trying to convey. If you see the airport environment, that the inner lines that you see drawn all the way around the various different pavements, you can kind of make out the primary runway, which essentially runs more or less in kind of a, excuse me, kind of a northwest by southeast kind of an alignment. And then you also have a secondary runway or a turf runway that's more or less kind of designed or operating more or less in a northeast by southwest kind of an alignment. But once you get away from the airport environment, you can kind of see where Highway fourteen goes around the north end of the airport here where I'm kind of tracing out. And where you see these lines that kind of grow up in concentric kind of an outline, if you would, equal distance, that's that conical surface that I was talking about that is going up all the time as you get further and further away from the runways. So by the time you get out to this outer ring out here, you're pretty high above the airport that there probably wouldn't be anything out there unless it was an enormous type of a cell tower or some sort of a communication tower, which there are none. That would would be an issue, I guess, for the the New Ulm Airport. So. So this is basically the first part of it. The second part of it, which you have to look at from a zoning standpoint, which is probably more important for tonight's discussion, when we start talking about land use safety around the airport itself and close in. And that's where we're going to get into that discussion now. Now, before we leave this, one thing I did want to point out is the primary runway has what is commonly referred to as an approach that has instrument, an instrument approach, and it's particularly on the south end. And an instrument approach requires a little bit more of that trapezoid business that I was talking about earlier that grows and gets higher the further you get away from the end of the runway. And that's what this drawing is actually representing. The inner trapezoid, if you look in this area here that I'm tracing out in here, that is a plane, if you look at it like this, that's coming off the end of the runway and going out into space at a flat slope. Once you get to the edge of that trapezoid, this line here and this line here, then what happens is you try to, you you start to grow out at a trough to the point that you go up and up until you match these conical lines that go around here. This might be getting way complicated for tonight's discussion, but I just want to let you know the level of things of what people are looking at when you have to go through the zoning for safety reasons for an approach at the end of a runway. Was there any questions about that part of it? We can circle back certainly, but I just want to make sure I wasn't losing or somebody didn't have a burning question. But let me dive a little bit into the land use zoning. Now, land use zoning, this exhibit is a good representation of the big picture. This is the big picture of what we're looking at around the airport environment from a land use safety standpoint. As you can see, the primary runway, the paved runway, is the longest. Hence, it has the biggest imprint of the yellow trapezoids there at the end of the runway. So that's going to be the biggest zone of influence, if you would, as far as what zones are going out there, zones A and B. Zone C, we'll talk about that here a little bit in a minute. The two runways that we have, this runway that I'm tracing out right now with the cursor, that is the existing crosswind runway, which is a turf runway, the grass strip. That also has trapezoids, but they're much less intrusive, as you can see. The footprint of the new runway is more or less in this east-west fashion. And you can see that it mirrors or matches pretty closely as to what that existing turf or crosswind runway is because what it'll be is essentially a replacement, that the existing turf runway will eventually be realigned. So the existing turf runway would be eventually going away and left with just this new turf runway alignment that's more in a true east-west type direction. The reason for that has a lot to do with a lot of different variables. The city, the airport commission, the city has looked at this for a long time. You know, Joe, I think we've been looking at this for for many, many years, certainly. What makes the most sense, but it has a lot to do with wind coverage. You know, what 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 direction do the winds come from and what areas do they favor, which makes a lot of difference when you're talking about flying aircraft. In addition to where is the least populated areas as well, from a perspective of being least disruptive. So that was why that runway alignment was chosen. And again, that's for a future runway that'll be happening in the not-too-distant future. Okay, we'll talk a little bit about and we'll zone in on getting into the actual runway approaches themselves. This is kind of a blown-up version of those yellow trapezoids we were just looking at on the big picture. And where we're looking right now is essentially this trapezoidal area up on this end of the primary runway, the primary paved runway. Okay? I can point out a few things. As many of you know, this is Walmart, this is Menards. You can see the trapezoid that goes right down the center here. As you can see, this was thought about at the time that Menards was building out in that area. And if any of you have ever gone back, I know I've been back here a couple of times, back in a lumberyard. You know, you know where's where that fence kind of makes that little bit of a angle. You might be wondering why. Well, this is why. Is because they have to do is make sure that that structure is outside of the the zone. So if you look at this approach, this approach is clean, what we call clean, if there is anything out there. Now, there is the cold storage buildings that are on the other side of the railroad tracks. If some of you know that area out there, you'll know that there is some cold storage buildings that are out in this area here. Those are basically buildings that are going to be in Zone B. And Zone B, that is an allowable or compatible land use because of some, the way that that area is looked at as far as how many people would actually be in that area, how many people would congregate, how big the lot size is. There's a lot of things that go into figuring out the the nuances between Zone A and B. But if if there were any issues with that, then we'd have to start looking at exempting that property, but there was no reason to do so because it was. One thing before I go too much further that I'll have you remember, when you take a look at the runways, you take a look at the runway distances. And again, they're printed on this drawing, but you can't really read them all that good in this. I'm a little afraid to to zoom in because I'd probably lose it. But the way to view the trapezoids and how the trapezoids are defined is it's two-thirds, one-third, or a full length of the runway. Off the end of the runway is what you have to protect. Zone A goes for two-thirds of whatever the runway length is, is the length of that Zone A. And then the final one-third is actually going to be one-third of the length of the runway. So two-thirds, one-third, you've basically got a full length of the runway at the end of the runway, both ends. And that's what the state requires. So you look at these trapezoids, that's what those are representing. That Zone A, the distance that you're going out, unfortunately, our our exhibit here cut it off, but there's actually those leader lines that come down from the top actually show the distance. But for graphical purposes, you can kind of see where it comes in. But that distance going out from where it starts at the end of the runway and goes out and ends, that's two-thirds of the runway length itself. And that final distance to where Zone B is defined, going all the way out to the end, that's the one. Okay. That's the easy one. On to three-three. This one gets a little bit more complicated. When you see colors, you see colors, that's some, that's when we start to get a little bit more interesting at the end. The colors that are represented on this drawing, these properties that are located in here that are all color-coded, the proposal, and after much coordination and discussion with the JASB, it was the ultimate decision to ask the commissioner to exempt these properties from the zoning. Reason being is there is a requirement of the statute that does say that you're not, this isn't supposed to be retroactive, which would mean that, okay, you put this thing in place, now you have a whole bunch of properties that are not compliant that have to be here. It allows you to avoid that. If they're there, they're there first, allow them to stay by exemption. As long as those properties stay in the current use that they're in, they'll still continue to be exempted. So they can change hands, but as long as the purpose and the use of that property doesn't change, those properties will be exempted. So those properties, each one of them, and the reason that we had to look for an exemption is you can see all of the properties that are color-coded there. Maybe some of you own those properties, I'm not sure. But if you do, you can see that there are structures clearly in in that Zone A, which would be something that would be in new construction and wouldn't be allowed. But since it was there first, it's allowed to stay.
Does that, have that Zone A line moved?
It it's slightly moved, but it did move basically more to the north in this particular case because of that fifty-five hundred foot runway we were talking about before. Not fifty-five hundred feet, it's only forty-four. So it's actually a little bit more intrusive than what it is here, or more impactful than what's.
I have a copy of a flat. It's somewhere in there.
Okay.
And it shows a line that looks like this moved. My house wasn't in the original one, now it is.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I can speak to the one that the county has. I mean, certainly we'd like to see a copy of it if you have something.
It's on record, but I've got a copy.
Okay. But this is actually what it is based on where the current runway ends are. The the previous one was based on a theoretical location of where those runway ends were. So, you know, I guess, take that for what it what it'd be worth, but this would be the zoning going forward.
Does that mean that somebody's in Zone A and wants to add a garage? Is that going to be a problem to add on the garage in that area?
As long as the land use does not change, it should be. But that would be something that would be the decision ultimately of the Board of Adjustment. It wouldn't be this body, it would be the body that this body appoints. Okay. Good question, Al. As far as Zone B is concerned, Zone B, I don't believe was going to have any of the properties because if it's a penetration to Zone A, that's the one that prevails because it's the most restrictive. So you can see like some of the properties, like say, for instance, four, five, and six and seven for that matter, all straddle it. But it's really a function of Zone A. But it's really a function of zone A and zone B. So by since it'll be exempted, they'll also be exempted, they're just exempted from the zoning area. So it doesn't matter, zone A or zone B, it's just, that's what it is. All right. Now we'll move on, we'll talk a little bit about the crosswind turf runway. That runway has an alignment, you can see here, this is the runway four end, which would basically be up closest, I guess, as you go out on twenty-seven. You can kind of see where it comes pretty close to that farm that's out there, but stays just inside of, of where it's at, in that kind of agricultural or farm field area. As you can see, this one is, again, one of those approaches that we call clean, if you would, that doesn't have any issues or anything that would need to be exempted. So this would fall under the new zoning, so. This one was never zoned, not under the pre, under the existing zoning, this runway is not zoned. Again, it should have been, the state has kind of taken exception to it for many years, since nineteen eighty-four. Because there's an interim period that is going to get, it's going to take a while to get the new one in place. And then interim period, the zoning has to be in place for this runway, for this runway to continue to be a public, open to the public. This one would eventually, what they call sunset, once the new one is in place.
Mr. Page and JASB members in public, we originally, with our first draft that we sent to the state for agency review, we did not include four-two-two and, as Brian indicated, they kind of took exception to that and kind of turned around and said they want this zone, even though we're looking at ultimately doing something different, for the time being, they do want its own, so.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the other end, because the other end gets interesting, and we got some color on that end. And this end is basically, as many of you know, kind of up there, intersection of Highland Avenue and the highway, highway fourteen. It's in the Sarah Hills, kind of nicks of Sarah Hills subdivision, and then also the established neighborhood that's essentially there along highway fourteen. So as you can see, all of the properties that you certainly, excuse me, see colored that are on this drawing, all of those different properties would be exempted from the zoning. And there's reasons for each one of them that we could walk through, but I think for the time, the purposes of tonight's discussion, these are the properties. If you're a homeowner, I guess, of one of those properties, know that it's the JASB's decision to take this to the commissioner and ask for those properties to be exempted. Anything that you don't see colored on this drawing would fall under the new zoning, once it gets established. So you can see this one's got quite a few properties. As a matter of fact, this one is probably the most number of properties of any of the other. You'll see most of the other stuff we're going to look at from here on is pretty clean, for the most part. It's just that three-three end that we just looked at and this end. Part of the reason that that runway was not zoned previously was, is because of this. Now, the two thousand and nineteen process gave some allowances to follow a different process and a different procedure to allow for some exemptions, a little bit more stronger language in there for us to use as a, a body in drafting this. And that's what we're doing in the process that we're following, is to exempt those properties from the zoning. But you can see, from a planning standpoint, that runway, as you can see, Sarah, Sarah Hills fills in, the, the city just continues to expand in that direction. That runway is just not aligned. It may, it may have worked out great when it was built in, I want to say it was probably in the nineteen forties, I think is when that grass strip was first built. Looked great then, I mean, if you go back to the historical photos, you know, that are on, on archive. I mean, there wasn't anything out there then, but a lot of development that's happened since then. And, and then the zoning came on board, and when the zoning requirements came into effect, also we have a lot of issues up. So from a, an expansion standpoint as well, that an airport is always looking at, okay, what can we do in order to be able to allow the aircraft that we have? And then maybe the aircraft that might be coming in the future, be able to get them in and out safely at our airport. They're always looking at protecting for, building something and planning for a runway that's going to be able to support that, not be regressive where it's going to get shorter and shorter and shorter until you can't use it. That's the situation with this runway. So that's part of the reason why the runway is looking to be relocated. In addition to, back then, really can't answer, because historical data on any sort of wind coverage is a lot different. Usually go back to about the nineteen sixties with some pretty good information, but going back farther than that is pretty sketchy. So when you go back to that, and maybe back then, you know, they, they had reasons why they wanted to go in this direction. But in today's day and age, the other alignment that I showed you earlier that's more in a true east-west fashion, the wind coverage actually favors that when you have a crosswind, like today. Today, it would be really good to have that east-west runway out there. Watching some of those aircraft come in earlier this afternoon, and they were, you know, having to use their pilot skills, so to speak, to be able to get those aircraft down. So. So anyway, this is the plan, I guess, for that runway approach? Yes, sir.
Any lot that's in zone A requires an exemption? If it's exempted?
If it's exempted, it's exempted from the zoning. So what we're talking about.
Where to be exempt? If it even has a small part?
No. Now, the way to look at it would be, is these properties, like say for instance, this property here, the, the one that's purple. This, I, I don't remember what business this is, but there's a business here and there's another business that's up here. But both of those businesses were basically built prior to the zoning actually even being something that's required by the state. So in a sense, they can grandfather in just on that alone. But the other properties, like say for instance, this area in here, this area in here is currently vacant, there's nothing out there. And what the zoning is really trying to do, or trying to get at, is to prevent anything from coming in there that might be incompatible, from a safety standpoint.
The reason I'm asking you is, move your cursor right down to the first block. Down Airport Road. Little corner of it. It's in zone A.
This one right here?
No, Airport Road.
Up here.
It shows it as vacant lot, but my residence is there. And the little corner of it is in zone A. Doesn't that lot get an exemption?
That's a good question. Generally speaking, the way the commissioner would probably look at that, because they have many other properties, unless there was something in there, in that little sliver, in the sliver. Unless there was something in there, they would probably say, hmm, no, there's really no reason to exempt that because it's, it's really not in our, our zoning exemption influence area anyway. The only thing it is, is just that little sliver. So they'd probably say, probably not on that. Because what could you, I mean, what, they're ready for it, I mean, did you have any plans for that little piece?
Oh, no, it's in the setback area.
Okay.
Right, yep.
So, yeah, I, I would say that area probably would not be allowed to be exempted for that reason. I mean, because it's mainly outside of the, the impact zone.
The bounds of the lot.
It's not, not part of the, not part of zone A restrictions. But do keep in mind, we also have that height restriction. And then we also have the zone C, which would, it would fall under. But you would have to be at least a hundred and fifty feet above the ground for it to be a problem as far as zone C is concerned. Good question, though. All right. Yes?
Let's say tornado came down and wiped that whole area clean, it's all colored. They can rebuild? As long as the use doesn't change?
As long as the use doesn't change. That's a good question, because there is a, a, a section that does discuss that, that if it's damaged, is what they say, or whatever the case may be, by fire, or whatever the case may be. Because of all of those properties that you're looking at on this, this page here, they're all colored, are exempt, as long as, like you said, the key is that the use doesn't change. As long as the use doesn't change, they would be allowed. But if the use changes and somebody wants to come in there and put like a multi, you know, plex or something like that in there, then that would be off limits. And they'd say, nope, now you're, you're, you're now no longer exempted, is what would happen. Again, we're leaning way forward, but this would be the decision that the Board of Adjustment would, would typically make in a case like. This is runway nine, this is the new proposed crosswind runway. And going back to the big picture, that would actually be this more or less east-west aligned runway. So just to kind of put it in perspective for everybody here. As you can see, that's a clean one, you don't see any colors there. So you have your trapezoids that come out, this one, you can see the distances up here nicely. The distances are basically mirroring what's out there today in terms of the existing turf runway. You see your zone A at the end of the runway, and zone B going for the additional third of the length of the runway. The trapezoid display, if you would, and how that goes out, that follows the, basically the approach for the end of that runway, that the, similar to what the FAA uses, or what they call the approach end of that runway. So there's a mathematical equation that determines that based on the classification of the runway, what it is. But I didn't describe that earlier, but some of you might be wondering, why isn't it just a rectangle? Well, it does go out at a distance off the end, and the reason for that is, has a lot to do with. Again, as you're coming in on an approach, you're going to be drifting around a little bit. Closer and closer you get into the end of the runway, you should be able to be lined up, or else there's another procedure for you to do a misstep approach.
So anything outside of that in zone C, farmers out there and they want to put up a grain bin or grain lake?
Well, again, it'll be up to the, the Board of Adjustment and the zoning administrator to kind of be the watcher, the keeper of that information of any development out there. But technically speaking, if you are building anything or constructing within a certain distance of any runway out there throughout the United States, you are required to submit a notice of construction. So you do have to send in a notice, and typically this has to be sent into the Federal Aviation Administration. You tell them what you're building, the height of it, the location of it, they tell you whether or not it's going to be okay. A grain bin, personally, I don't think it'd be a problem, but it still has to go through that process.
So just for instance, the MLC Field House, that was the reason, they went through that process. And once the building corners were established and maximum height that the building was established, it was ran through that FAA review process.
As long as you brought that up, does the density apply for that soccer field?
The soccer, soccer fields, as long as it's not the stadium field, so we got the, the youth fields that are in that location, it does not apply to them.
As I specifically mentioned, that that is a compatible land use. So that, that is okay from that, that respect. But it's a good question, though, and the level of involvement, even when the high school was being built, there was a lot of analysis. As a matter of fact, I think we looked at every single light pole, if I remember right, that's out in the parking lot. The FAA had to have coordinates on each one of them, heights, everything across the board, so.
Now, within that, let's say, nowadays, there's a lot of drones flying around. What's the stipulation on that within?
The drones, operating near an airport, they would need a license to be able to do that, and a licensed pilot in order to be able to fly it. And generally speaking, they would have to follow very similar rules to what a, a normal fixing of aircraft or even a.
I'm just talking, the little ones.
Even the little ones. If they're of a certain weight, I, I'm not sure how familiar you are with them, but if they are of a certain weight, they actually fall under an, a FAA guideline that basically requires them to register where they're flying, and particularly if they're flying anywhere near an airport.
So is that zone A, B, or C, including that, that area?
It, it, it.
My craft itself?
Yeah. You have to have a specialized permit for that. But, but again, the, the zoning that we're talking about here, it doesn't really matter if it's a drone or if it's a, a regular manned aircraft of some kind. It's going to have the same effect. I mean, the purpose of it is to protect not only that thing out there buzzing around, but more so in this case, I mean, the people on the ground. You know, so it will fall under the same. But again, drones near airports, it's not just a given that they can go out there and fly it at the airport. There's, there are certain requirements that they have to go through, as the gentleman described. You know, and have to have a license in order to be able to do that, so. But it's becoming more and more of a problem as time goes on. All right. Runway two-seven, again, is clean at this point. This is basically showing Highland Avenue, as you can see, that kind of cuts through this area here. The high school, as you can see, the edge of the ball diamonds and so forth are right in this area here. And as you can see, by and large, most of zone A is actually going over agricultural property at this point. So the property that is currently in the zone A area, there isn't a need to put any exemptions in, similar to zone B. There's nothing out there currently in zone B that is problematic. So there's really no reason to actually put any zoning in, any exemptions to the zoning in place at this point, because everything does comply.
Does the density apply to zone B in that area, and out the ball fields?
The density does apply, but the density does allow for certain activities to take place there. And certainly a soccer field is a compatible land use that can occur out there. So if the decision was that the high school wanted to expand in that area and possibly put like a practice field or a scrimmage field or something like that, that, that certainly would be exempted. All right. I'll talk a little bit about next steps, where we go from here with this process, and then the presentation will be completed, and we'll open it up for any sort of public comment at that point. The next steps are going to be, is to gather any information that comes of tonight's meeting. And we will take any of that information and include that with a smittle that's going to go off to the commissioner, MinDOT's commissioner for review. And we will be requesting formally their approval, order of approval of the zoning. And typically, what would happen at that point is they would ask us, prior to doing that, they would, they would acknowledge a receipt of it, and they would ask us to go out and have one last public hearing, which we would do, again, very similar meeting, probably a little bit more truncated than tonight was, because there won't be any new information really to go over. And then the next process would be is for the JASB to convene and actually adopt the order. So that's where we're at, we're kind of in that final stretch, if you would, of the overall zoning. And the next process would be to send it off to MinDOT. Now, MinDOT has already seen this and reviewed it and commented on it. So even before tonight's meeting, just to make sure that everything met state standards. And it does, and they don't take that lightly, because when the JASB is convened, the JASB basically is, is given by state statute, a police authority, basically to adopt this zoning. So once they do that, it becomes final. So with that, that's all I really have for tonight. So if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly be here to answer them. But other than that, Joe, I don't know if you wanted to kind of take it from here?
Yeah, I'll.
We have one question in the back.
Okay.
Just to get clarity on the, on the density, some density side, so zone B or A, they're, they're exempt from all of that, or just from the use of the land?
I may have, you know, I think the way to look at the, the zoning would be, is, or the exemption would be, is when you're exempting something, you're exempting it from the zoning completely. Okay, so the colored properties that we primarily saw on Runways two-two and three-three, those colored properties are going to be exempted. So none of the stuff that we're talking about would apply to those properties, provided that they stay in the same use of what they're being used for today.
Density, all, th- this, this notice that says a property of owner of zone B and you own three acres and you can only have forty-five people at your, at your residency is exempt.
That's only if you, you fall under the zoning ordinance. And the property, if you're a colored property, the colored properties do not apply because you're exempted.
When you say colored property, what difference does it make if it's colored or whether you're in a zone? So I'm on Oakwood Heights Road. There's property there, we're in zone B and.
The three-three end, Brian.
And that would be exempt from this then?
It would be exempt from any of the zoning. So what you're reading there in zone B, you're exempted. Okay. Now, these properties that are out here, say for instance, this property that I've got the cursor on right now, this property over here, I, I have no idea if anybody here tonight owns those properties. Those properties are going to be part of the zoning. And that density calculation that you see in there would basically be fully enforceable on those properties. So just to be clear. When I say colored properties, the ones I'm saying is anything that you see colored on these two runway approaches?
So my house is in the non-colored property, it already exists, why is it?
Which, which one is it? Oh, okay.
So why is that not colored if some of the others are colored and they're exempt and mine's not?
The reason for it is those properties actually comply. They're, they're fully in compliance right now as, as a home, so as.
Except for the density. If I wanted to have a graduation, for example.
No, no, uh, it, it, a one-time event or something like that is, is one thing. What they're trying to prevent is anything that would actually be a permanent congregation of people is kind of how they classify it.
That's not what it says in the, in the notice. And that's why most of the people are here is because the notice says these are the restrictions you're going to have from here on out.
The, the restrictions are, is fifteen, basically persons per acre. And each one of those lots out there, as I understand it, is at least three acres in size. Okay. So if you're looking at three acres times fifteen, you'd have to have forty-five people essentially out there on a, a more or less a routine basis.
Like a, like a permanent residence.
Not, not, not if you're having a graduation party or a.
Family get together.
Shall not create, attract, or bring together a site population that would exceed fifteen times that of the site acreage. That's what, that's what it says. So it doesn't say periodically or permanently. It says very specifically, you can't bring together forty-five people on three acres.
Sure. I, I think in this particular case, again, the property and the, the, the fact that it's not exempted with the equation that's in there is not going to be a limiting factor to what you do on your property. Okay, what you do on your property for a, an event or whatever the case may be, that's up to you. It would just be different if you have, say for instance, forty-five people. I don't think your house is probably big enough to support forty-five people, but just guessing. But if, if what it's trying to prevent is some sort of a multifamily complex or something like that going in on that three acres, that all of a sudden you got forty-five people in a parking lot and everything else, they don't want that. So this would give the, the Board of Adjustment and the zoning administrator some leverage essentially to say, no, we, we can't approve that from a local permitting standpoint for you to build that. But if you're going to have a party, that's, that's.
But not to be disrespectful, but is the language going to change than what it stated here? So that your word may not be good enough ten years from now or fifteen years from now. It might simply be, hey, you got more than forty-five people at the event, you're going to get a thousand dollar fine and a misdemeanor. That's what the penalty is according to the, the current nineteen eighty-four, um, part of this. So my question is then, is that language going to change i- in this document?
We can certainly, you know, I guess.
Ordinance right here, the new one, the proposed one, adopted one nineteen, adopted nineteen eighty-four. And I guess if I'm an attorney, I'm looking at that going, if you have more than forty-five people there, you could get a misdemeanor and, and a, and a thousand dollar fine. But I can say, no, this guy at this meeting told me that wouldn't be good enough and I'm sorry, but that's not good enough for me.
Mr. Page, i- am I incorrect? But th- this property is currently subject to zone B restrictions because there is zoning in place.
Correct.
And that zoning has been in place since.
Nineteen eighty-four.
Nineteen eighty-four. So I don't know when the gentleman's house was constructed.
We could certainly, uh, make mention of that. I, I, I would venture to guess there's been plenty of gatherings on some of those properties, I would assume, at some point in time, since two thousand and five. You know, and what I would say is that's really not the, the purpose. The purpose of the body going forward, which would be the zoning administrator and the Board of Adjustment, would really be from a regulatory standpoint of looking at those properties, any change of conditions or change of, you know, anything that would be proposed on those properties, like the gentleman described about building a garage. Would that be allowed or something like? Private gatherings and private parties, I don't think is the purpose of that body to enforce that.
I appreciate that, I just, I just would like.
I, I understand, I understand. Yeah, it's, it's an interesting question that I guess I, I really don't. Um, but I, I, I'm certainly going to take what you're saying and, and look into it, see what we can come find out.
Can I get your name for the record, please? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a correction that should be made on this map that's going to be confusing in the future. That is not County Rule twenty-seven where you have County Rule twenty-seven printed. That's County Rule twelve. Twenty-seven runs the other way.
Okay.
That's going to confuse people in the future.
Yeah, this, just to be clear, this drawing will not be part.
That is County Rule twenty-seven where you have the cursor right here.
This, this drawing is not part of the, the, the zoning, but yes, well, it would certainly make those corrections.
Thank you.
Joe, would you like to start the public hearing side of it? Okay. Yes, sir.
Acres the city have to buy to build that new runway?
I, I don't even know and I don't think that's the purpose of tonight's discussion.
That's correct, yep.
That's a whole different, I mean, and this body is not really even part of that. So I really can't answer that question. Joe, did you want to start the public?
Yeah, I'll defer to Mr. Chair if, um, he can.
Okay, so we'd, um, we can start the, uh, public, uh, hearing, uh, portion of the, uh, meeting. Joe, was it your intention to have people come up to the podium and speak? Or do you want them to speak from there?
Yeah, I, I would prefer if they could come up to the podium, yes.
Okay, we would request then that you come up to the podium if you have comments, um, on this matter. We would ask that you provide your name and if you'd like to provide your address, that would help us out too. But, um, anybody that has any comments, questions, um, you know, uh, Mr. Page will, um, will be here. So, um, please feel free to, um, to come up.
Mr. Chairman, I should note, just for the, uh, JASB's knowledge, received a number of phone calls and or emails or office visits, um, after the notices went out. I'll just provide a brief synopsis of those, um, just so it's on the record, um, and we'll record those. Received a visit from Dale Gluth, he is at fourteen twenty-one U.S. Highway fourteen. Just wondering how this would affect his parcel. We went through, um, he's an exempt parcel off the, uh, Crosswind Runway, the existing Crosswind Runway. Went through that exemption with him. Received an e- email from Carol Kramer, um, asking what's changing with the update. And she's off the, uh, south end of the primary runway. And informed her that, that's really no changes that would affect her parcel compared to the nineteen eighty-four ordinance. Let's see, received email and had a phone conversation with Richard Eckstein, um, off of Oakwood Heights, the south end of the primary runway. Just had some general questions, uh, what's changing again from the nineteen eighty-four ordinance, went through that with him. I'm going to rec, uh, I don't think I'll get this last name pronounced right, but Jim Vane from Quality Appliance off of the two-two end of the runway, the Crosswind Runway. Just wondering how that would affect, uh, his business, um, uh, since he's located in zone A. Explained the exemption process that we were proposing for his parcel. Met with representatives from MLC, um, as they have some property that's included, um, on the primary, uh, south end of the primary runway. Just general, generally how that would affect the parcels, if they could still use it for, um, soccer and things of that nature, which we discussed. Couple of conversations with Mr. Davis. I think he, um, addressed his questions, um, with me today already. And then received a phone call from Patrick Schaefer from Menards Incorporated, asking what's changing on their end. They're on the north end of the primary runway and informed them that nothing is changing that would affect, uh, their lots and or business. And then finally had a, a meeting with Leo Marty, um, just questions on the exact areas that would affect his property. Had that meeting this afternoon. So that was a correspondence from the public that I have received to date.
Thank you.
But no formal written or, um, um, comments pertaining to the ordinance, just general questions.
Mr. Chair, uh, could I make a comment before you?
Okay, I, I should, I should note that, um, yeah, you're hearing from our city attorney, Robert Scott, who's been following the meeting on Zoom. Apologize, we should have told you that, um, earlier. And so that, he'd like to add and make a comment.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair, uh, Board members, uh, members of the public. So my name is Robert Scott, I'm the city attorney and I was just going to, uh, I was observing that during Mr. Page's presentation, there were at times a pretty robust, uh, question and answer back and forth with the public, which is a good thing because the purpose of this meeting is to be informational for the public. But as far as creating a record for the public hearing, since those comments and questions were made outside of the public hearing, maybe first a question for the city engineer. Was there any, uh, procedure in place to, uh, document the, those comments and who was making them?
Robert, yes, I'm documenting comments and this is being recorded as well, so I can go back and, yep.
Okay, I was going to suggest or encourage anyone, uh, who had those questions or comments during the presentation to participate in the public hearing, just to make the formal record. It's not a requirement, uh, just a, like, an encouragement, I guess. But thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Okay. Does anybody have, um, any comments or questions that they'd like to offer?
I want to make a formal request. My name is Mark Bergman, one six zero three two Oakwood Heights Road. And I want to make a formal request that the zone, the houses within that zone are exempted. And the language within the document that we received be either corrected or amended so that it's more specific to what was said is, uh, is, um, the amount of the density, um, situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, once more, anybody? I sense that, uh, no one else wants to offer any comments. Why don't you go up to the podium, please?
Richard Eckstein, uh, one five nine eight six Oakwood Heights Road. With, uh, I understand that there's a, a different company or somebody managing the airport right now. And wondering who is, let's say for noise complaints or anything else, who is the entity that would, uh, take those complaints and be responsible for that?
Those, um, complaints, it's my understanding, uh, Mr. Stodheim would be the one that you should, uh, register those with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Golden?
My name is Brady Golden. Uh, I own property number sixteen oh five two Oakwood Heights Road. And I'm looking on the document in nineteen eighty-four and it looks like my parcel was deemed exempt on property number nine on the color map. It's marked red and on this latest version, it is not colored. So I'm trying to understand the implications of that.
Yeah, we do need to exempt you, Mr. Golden, as he's under that three acres. He's that one we had to move that parcel line for. So yeah, we need to make sure you're added to the exempt list, just because of your lot size, yep.
Yeah, well, mine is increasing. It'd be Mr. Bergman's, that would be under the three acres.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
So I don't know if that would change.
I mean, I'm just.
That as well, but just so we have clarity on that, that I noticed that changed.
You are, let's see, just finding your parcel. I believe, um, Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you weren't exempted just because zone A, that zone A line came to the north.
Okay.
So it barely touches your, your parcel. You're fully encompassed minus, uh, maybe a ten square feet within zone B.
So it'll be all zone B for.
Correct. Yep, yep. So yeah, Mr. Bergman's the one that we probably should add to the exempt list just because of parcel size that we, the JASB took care of that, um.
Yeah, we approved the variance for that.
The variance for that plat, yep. But, yeah, we'll have to make that note.
Okay, if there's nobody else that wishes to offer a comment, we're going to close the public hearing at this point in time and proceed with, um, with our agenda. So we have, um, a couple items on the agenda. You're welcome to stick around if you have, uh, further questions after the meeting's over. Mr. Page is going to stay. And so, um, welcome you to, um, talk to him at that time. Mr. Stodheim also will, uh, will be here. Okay, the, um, next item on our agenda is to consider authorizing staff to submit the ordinance and public comments to the Commissioner of Transportation for review and approval.
So, um, Mr. Chair, um, Board members, it would be, uh, my desire with our next steps here is we'll compile these comments and questions. Have, uh, meet and hunt on the city's behalf, submit that to FAA or, uh, MinDOT Office of Aeronautics for, um, to the Commissioner, uh, for approval to adopt. During that process, I would also hope to, um, get authorization from the Board again today to, um, once we receive that, uh, communication back from the Commissioner of Transportation to, um, authorize staff to set the date for the next public hearing and issue the notice. So similar to what we did for this first, uh, public hearing. That way it would, we wouldn't need to reconvene just to set a public hearing date.
Go ahead.
Uh, that would include the, the exemption for Mr. Bergman then?
Yeah, we'll have to go through and make those revisions prior, prior probably, make a note. Make a note before we send that to the Commissioner of Transportation, so.
And that would, that takes a motion here now for that?
I, yeah, I think just to formalize that process, to allow us to make that change and submit it to the commissioner, and then to also set the public hearing once we get that far.
Then I will move, I'll move the staff, authorize the staff to submit the ordinance with the public comments and that. The exemption also.
For Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Berg, does that include allowing us to set the next public hearing date? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Clausen, are you good with your second on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, any members?
On the comments from MinDOT, the last two items there, I don't know if this is the right place to make note of it, but I think the exhibit F and G should really be H and I.
Those were taken into consideration of what we're looking at.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to review the next steps for adoption, I believe. Have we done that, or do you have anything you'd like to offer?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, Mr. Page did touch on that briefly during the presentation here this afternoon. But included within your packet, I, I do have kind of our, our checklist that we've been going by. So we're, we're at the first public hearing, that's now done. So we'll be now submitting the proposed ordinance to MinDOT. Once we hear back from them, we will conduct that second public hearing. And it's my intention, depending on the comments from that second public hearing, that we would adopt it at that same meeting as well, depending on how the public comment section of that public hearing goes. But, and once we have adoption of that ordinance, then the work of the JASB will be completed at that time. So we're, we're getting close. And then the staff would file the ordinance with Brown County Recorder's Office after that. But only a couple steps left, and we're getting close.
Okay. Are there any other questions on part of the members with staff or with Mr. Page that you'd like to ask at this point in time? If not, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
The Bergmans are this person here, and I.